Alright, so the call is meeting of order, put your eyes where the red light leads.
Our judges to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so that will come, Mr. Masrijane, sit down. Mr. Lora.
Here.
Mr. Lora.
Rest.
Mr. There.
Here.
Mr. Ernie.
Here.
Mr. Zizzi.
Here. Join.
Yeah.
Alright, good.
Uh, this is called comment, if I have a direct comment that I'll tell you. Say your name and address. Have a little time.
That's cool. Alright.
Alright, so, uh, any recommendations? Alright, well, uh, let's start with our first, uh, I can't remember which is, because it's usually hard to make. Uh, and I have to say one personal note that I think is very nice today, because I'm here today, not just for the movie thing, you know, always bring us, but, um, as most of you all know, Lord, I sit on every floor, and so I get to see what they do every day, the entire nation. Um, and all the great stuff that we do, our colleagues, various business PMRs, regarding our, you know, like, data.
Thank you for the wonderful reaction. My name is Roy Go, I'm the executive director of Parkway, and I'm right now, I'm on the main. I'm Ross Gallagher, I'm assistant director, principal, and secretary of business, assistant principal, supervisor. Uh, we appreciate the board to talk about this, obviously, being a sort of a nominee, uh, along with Parkway. Uh, they say, uh, children there today, they're nine as well, so make sure you know us along with Parkway. And you can also ask me questions if you may have. Ask your seats, uh, this last week, I had a little joy, I knew it was my name, and dumb grand ass. And also, as a whole, just some general information about Parkway, and, um, how to get along with us so far. So, if you have any questions, have a kind of, like, or a, like, you'd love to have to add it out. So, the kind of presentation is about this way. Um, I just want to start out with some very general facts, they're all pretty recent. Uh, PD, uh, actual very house, that in two thousand seventy, forty-one percent of high school kids are of all the right things. We have no idea what that would come, so we're out for something, when we know the word, and that's pretty long. Forty-one percent, and I would imagine that we have a ninety percent of kids who don't have all the shared resources. And the least is maybe less kids. Um, the inflation rate, well, it was done by the, uh, Pittsburgh Holiday Conference, focus reasons, so on, off the new watch base, and had our own. You know, what I was very about, my parents said, you're going to all, you're going for, you're going, you're gonna make a lot of money, you're not gonna have to work, and I'm happy. So, I'm sorry, but, um, well, sending these kids to school, and, you know, really, the jobs, if we're not looking at this part, you know, we're going to be short in the same case, but the real jobs are such a period that during the early days, you have to sustain it.
Yeah.
We appreciate that, that's a good one.
We appreciate the force of the Grand National Federation Conference, you know, to pull the new law coming in. And we also welcome partners that choose to wish your pieces of A and real court marketing team your position. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on our part. We always send you a budget, a G B R, we start to pay the index. We are marketing my major renovations, our major access. We're sure they are major access in our school in nineteen sixty-seven. They're originally built in the middle of the land by one seventy-year-old upgrade. Black sector U S school, supernet, we'll give it early, we don't have that. I question the supernet, request any money, consider our national question related to shadow or supernatural access. How does that work? The way that works is the history of days, like eight years or seven, four years. So, of course, we can run a lot of the law for the children, three thousand or four million. So, my secretary of education will pass that each month. And that story is separate, so, of course, your budget, your main budget, your third budget, your eighth. All shots, they were usually pressured back there, or a lot, or a lot less.
That's what I think.
So, so I actually, I do want to, um, my surprise, because you guys do an awesome job out there. So, a couple of things I wanted to bring, show the board, that, um, that I haven't touched on. It's your work in Hairsboro, so, very, uh, the mountains, all the forests, the vegetation, the most, uh, these mountains.
So, the recent legislation passed, although kids still have to pay fees, because if they come up asking, a lot of people can give them access. With no part in this, there's no reason whatsoever. Because there was a four of us, four or five of us, this time, there was actually one boy, that had only got the seat in the house. He was sitting, he was very big, three more kids back, you know, and then, it was like, it was sense of the right bill. So, we did. And, uh, actually, over two years, my first year, did survive, I'm gonna say with that, because I would live before the law. But we got through this year, so, really, really excited. There's actually another set of elements that's out there right now, that eliminates just some of the. And one of them, it is the A C P R S A K, or four N O, A C P four N O, you're gonna say A P four N O. So, we would obviously be a big supporter of that as well. Well, the idea I did learn in Hairsboro, regardless of what's on the council, it's that everybody needs these. And I'm not sure if it's, and it ripped, really must keep that, so, yeah, they're, they're, they're. So, we're happy to be part of that, and we make it personal, it's not here, we try to be more, so, you know, so. We want things to go up to be in our office, and that is why we have the issues forward to buy new pieces of furniture. However, our equipment's, maybe, maybe, just have a paint house office. And at home, we would be spread my office, the same, we're saying, do you want to go up and do one?
Other thing I was going to add to you was, you know, you guys have a program, so, there are programs that aren't just for C C students. Like Innovation Center, where we had, I think it was a group of C D, even.
Yeah, there's a group participating. We're a partnership with the parent innovation center, which is, so, because we're getting this corporation. We parent case, sometimes our kids, sometimes our children, uh, all children, it's about, uh, seeing that's a certain business issue. And they're actually solving verbal problems, this is my partner. And they break expertise issue, they call the loss, it's true, it's the key, when the losses say they're hard. And it's brilliant, very happy, it's helping their projects and, uh, people work, and they're finding people more. It's really all about having kids think critically. Whenever it fits, we try to parent C C kids, we wish your kids, make them, uh, kind of work together, it's been great for our day. We also have a C C aviation academy on a man, a lot of your tech head program, that's how sober it is for. Great opportunity.
Okay, I'm proud of you. See, both of us have parents, ask us about that, okay? So, um, since I've been out, we've come to the homeschool, it's not about.
We lean on the C C students. They have a learning aviation, uh, thing, you know, she runs out, he's with the counselors here, the police officer here, then he walks here. And, and then, it's, it's relevant, all for us, they hold today. We, we kind of house them, and basically, December, and then, suddenly, we did help you guys, so, we're not, we're not, we're not, we're not. And I think, you want something, well, you know, you want something, I'll let you have it. Very short, so, the C C actually did, uh, uh, the decision, so, it's good for us, but we're not doing that, so. So, we believe a lot, uh, what I call, calling on the C C kids, the aviation level of kids, and the focus.
And you talked about getting these years, like, those are industry, those are business, because there ain't has an option. So, my, my idea is, most of our way in access.
So, just, yeah, since you answered that, I, the question I was thinking of, say someone, their student decides to lay begin, you know, they're, they're a junior this year. And they're like, oh, that, that should be up there, is, 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 all these designers four-year programs, or someone other?
This is kind of one, two, three, four, we have relationships, office in, while you're there, for every, again, and while you should get a project, any credits, or should associate. Uh, so, you kind of, and you have, you know, uh, in terms of your curriculum, you start fifth grade, or you come to the fifth grade, and we just go, kind of short presentation. And then, we organize it back to sixth, seventh grade for a tour, building, and then, we have summer preparation camp, uh, sixth grade, seventh grade. And then, we finish up the third exploration day, the eighth day, the day, kind of, fall. So, those are all, that's the type of scores, more options, the district has available to them, that's like the district, I'm not about the new. There is, this is new legislation, uh, of pure educational over course standards, or P E to the second grade, education over course standard, with the South Nation with it. There's a certain number of patches, like, by fifth grade, I think it's five patches, uh, pure values, not necessarily those, because pure values, by eighth grade, I think it was level six. And then, some more of the eleventh grade. What we're in the process of, we're very clear, it's not very clear, how this will work, but, these things that we have in place already, one piece we do know, this is all activity for now. We're gonna create that all of activity, policies, use our son, if your kids have a poor, we're gonna hand kids, say, here's your all of activity, and I do, you know, my own.
Is your kids, are, is that sufficient?
Your kids do not have this.
And they have, please, where, or, or, yeah, access?
Criminals, kids, have something about white, just because, you know, the time. Some come, does some occur camp, oh, that's poor, that's, that's aggression, what about, uh?
So, then, when was they announced this Friday?
Since I feel great.
High school?
Actually, actually, research helps, this is about fifth or sixth grade, yeah, really. By the middle school, they're, 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 they're kind of fine. And when we started taking that, there's around five years, six or eleven years ago, because, uh, once kids had been added to high school, it's hard to get out. And they have terrible kids, that's my sport, yeah, they go, we take any ball, they just won't, or, uh, your kids get high school fifth grade, and then, just, uh, we get affiliated to some camp. Where they do a prayer, so, you should, they, they, you know, they come. If there's something you want to do, it's called, and then, off, and then, just, have them out there. Most districts do.
I was gonna say, I know we all talk about four kids, and I remember, and just, we saw, so, I'm just.
And probably, certainly, no, it's not a big deal, and it's, uh, you know, okay, and then, there are. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you. I'm sure you have the initiatives, and then, we'll make it out of here.
I got a couple, a quick present, thank you. I've been very fortunate to, to go off, especially, that was, since, eight, since seventy-five. Mostly, we're very good, but I, and I also, before I go, I have to wish you the best.
How do you?
I have a very, very good for our ladies, because about five extra bosses, so, I'm like, it's nice.
Right there.
Is this fair, I guess you must also comment on this. I I was just gonna agree with Scott that not just work, but core looking at supplies in all areas. So a few years ago, a classroom teacher at the primary school in B is will make like one hundred fifty dollars of money in supply money initially about fifty dollars. And so they're they're seeing a reduction in their amounts of money so that, you know, is received in a certain way. But yes, they come to us, they come to the principal and they say, we need this. And we look at all these different areas that we have and I say, oh, I can take it from here or I can take it from here or I can get that for free from there. And so we're being creative.
Alright, so Julie said a lot of it, talking about that teachers at one time would have a hundred fifty dollars as their teacher's supply. Let's buy their pens and post notes and things of that nature. That was reduced uh to fifty dollars, so that causes a little bit of action. Not everybody used their hundred fifty dollars or could some, you know, would push that limit. And so she said, now we're trying to look at all our supplies and and make sure we're being fiscally responsible in all those areas. So it's just not, you know, here, you know, buy as many red pens as you want, buy as many blue pens as you want. Now we're starting to look at and say, okay, what do you need? What do you need, you know, and again, teacher supplies are not the same as student supplies and sometimes that gets confused. There's 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 a lot. So when we're talking about teacher supplies, Julie, we're talking about some of the things that they need, pens, maybe.
Well, they and and they really have an open brain on that. So anything that they use in their classroom, sometimes they use it for, you know, organizing for their school classroom sale, something of whatever they feel that they need. You know, and many teachers, as you know, I mean, we're all teachers, they go and they get other things in addition to that. But but um the classroom money that be in them is for their classroom.
So let me, so let me ask this. So if teachers and principals are working, you see, they're trying to just don't let them have the funds and then they don't have the principal. So have principals have seen any reason that my classes for arts and arts?
Art supplies?
Art supplies.
Oh, I I was just.
Talking to a few, they haven't seen a huge increase yet.
I haven't.
Yeah, I don't know.
No, there have been things that people have come to me for special request for particular things and maybe they use to buy it this way through some supply money. We still need that, so we hopefully say, okay, where can we take that from? And so.
Has that been a big increase or?
I would say a slight increase, not not.
But it's still happening in the past.
Yes, oh, yes.
So Julie, was your concern high school? Julie, sorry. So was your concern on that high school uh supplies? Or were you with your?
Sounds higher, so that's what I'm trying to all take me to.
I would double check in the high school. What I did talk to Valerie today and she didn't give me any, anything that was there. Uh, I believe in Valerie uh had it reduced to almost eight thousand dollars. Well, she did do that with other departments as well. And then what they're finding is, no, no, she did it with the, she did it with our tech ed. And our tech ed has found that, well, they really didn't need that. They were buying stuff just to buy it and store it. They they're they weren't using their surplus. And and I think that's what we're finding with with the art department too is they're they they're still doing art projects, still doing all those things that they've done. It's just they're using the surplus. They're still, you know, and they need something. As always, they go to Valerie and say, hey, we need this project, this is what we're doing, she can find the money to do. I think it's really just having everybody look at getting fiscally responsible in order to, you know, meet the needs of all. So, you know, Valerie at the high school's budget is, was, I think, like ninety thousand dollars. And they put in for thirty thousand of that ninety thousand. So she had to say that, no, that's, that's, you know, that's not going to be. Her budget used to be nothing. Who's Julie at, if you're Valerie, but.
Or we, yeah, the position, I mean, once the thirty eighty, are you hearing that whenever they go and request something that we're saying no? Are they being told no? I have a good feeling that they're being told no, right? It's just that they don't have the ability just to go out and buy it on the ground.
Correct.
And that's why I said mine have been going too high without that, right? Right? I wanted to deny people stuff.
I mean, I could see there would be an issue if if ultimately they said, hey, we need, you know, we need play or something and you say, nope, can't do it.
Right.
And that's where, you know, whatever that is. So if we're not saying no, then it doesn't seem to be an issue.
The only thing we said no to would be the open, like, purchase right of thirty thousand.
So Julie, I think those are fair points um so we can have us discuss. And I mean, we think bigger, the bigger point to me is Julie, the fact that the budget is basically that half money nine, right? So we're not having art supplies or where the other costs in terms of their capacity, potential activities or other areas. So, you know, again, it's not just send us on the, just you look at the data to see if, you know, for example, teachers are requesting principals, requesting traditional patterns or X Y Z products or materials, resources. And then using that in different areas, you know, either you got to graduate, you get them, this type of resources, and it's like hot, right?
Alright, so I don't disagree. Well, we haven't been, we haven't been given any of those concerns. Those concerns may happen in January, February, March, you know, we can't foresee them. Uh, there hasn't been, the principal that I've been with them, they haven't really said, look, I've been requesting this since we turned down. And I speak with the union president, union president probably have as well. Uh, those, those discussions haven't been given to them. But again, if if it's a name.
Well, we should, I know, I know too good of this company. I mean, we should have had these discussions, well, we we had these discussions before, but I'm saying that we started talking much. Instead, we weren't gonna raise taxes, started really attacking the spending system. We knew this was a company, so to to sit here and say, this is due to us, right? We knew this company. Now, yes, but it is a discussion, but again, true, true. But at the end of the day, Julie is correct in going, it is what it is, right? So our people need to monitor it going forward. People aren't being told no right now, but yeah, it's been it's been a year. But at the end going forward, we need to put under our passes, we need to go through a project saying, hey, we're not rolling budgets forward to try to fit these square pegs around. We need to get down to the decision makers, the teachers, principals, everybody, and let them say, here's what I needed building from your ground up, instead of carrying everything forward. And then that way you can truly get a picture and then at that point you can hold people responsible. Say, hey, look, here is what we put together now, that's not saying that this one right here is a good idea. Obviously, there's gonna be a review process in place, but that's how you hold people responsible. Would you put in this, your group would agree on the one? Now, these are ground rules we have to hold on.
So it's beneficial for us to see that who's filling in uh for the time period this time uh with the million principal. She's meeting with the directors, setting up all these individual meetings to try to explain, procure our aspect of what that budget system was. And that budget system it was, it was just trying to, this is what you got, this is it, there was no comp. Christina's plan, what she has, and she was already talking, Julie, you can back me up on this.
Yeah.
Uh, she's talking about bringing in teachers, bringing in the principals and saying, okay, what do you, what do you got, what are you looking for? So she, her model, which we're planning to follow coming through this, is more of a collaborative than we're asking the people who are at the ground floor, okay, what do you?
And she talked about doing that, hope to revise throughout the year, right?
Right, yeah, and that's just not a one time discussion, that's multiple types of.
So it was very perfect, yeah.
Yeah, we have to provide ourselves a way of, like.
I think that's a good point, Julie, and I know in some arts, I don't think this is the board, so people who are in the principal classes have a mind, right? To your point, so having these touch points that will keep us back, because she is in the future, at least for thirty classes, I think for this year, we could just be, we have cuts and have, have, they were cuts and they have some very, you know, that's the classes, so could be called, or not. Um, oh my gosh, I can't remember, how does that or, um, straight through some of the.
That's a great discussion, that really is. Talking about this point, and that's.
Well, fresh, the fresh set of eyes in her ass, well, that's a good thought.
Julie, okay, from our, we think that.
No, not a problem, that's my brief report for the day. Thank you, Julie, thanks for bringing out those introductions, really. We we need to know those things that we can, you know, these things.
Well, the other thing you talked about, Julie, the other thing, side by side, we were walking in the time frame, so she had to go over our meetings to go over and share, that's what she's found, but, but, you know, she's calling, but it's hard to find, I don't know, we really have, I really, I.
Yes, she wanted to be, maybe in this place, you know, maybe it's coming, finance may be all time, and I'll get into the city and, but for sure.
Yeah, maybe it's ordering her hour, because, yes, we have.
Yeah, I thought she had, it was good.
Alright, thanks, Julie. Looking now, uh, not really on the agenda, so on to the actual expression. So the first item is point one, uh, the paper that was, um, attached with the targets. Uh, are there any questions for housing, I could do this pretty solid, kind of, document. Um, I will say that for the reservations, we are not to be cruel, this is our, um, and most as you're dealt, very limited and reward, and effort towards, which is actually reported, this district, uh, is appreciated, very much appreciated. So just had to see that. Um, initially, I don't think so there. So I'm gonna have to, 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 to.
So what?
Second, Paul Baker?
Alright.
Any close? Uh, the, 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 the.
Sorry, Jason, no problem.
I, sorry.
My person.
Forget that, forget that.
We're gonna try to turn the issue over earlier. Heart here on that side. Uh, it's empty, no boats and stage. We've been, we would go on the stage, safe for us. Uh, some other, which is right over there, normally not be done. It's a very certain line is there. So, uh, contractor actually would go opposite with that. But, you know, or zero.
So, can I just, um, share some of the visual experience here? I, I've been all done inside. When I was in, um, parents, events, and also, and, um, there are comments about the dust, the dust in the school and potentially, um, issues. Like, is it, or I don't know, just related to the dust in the school? It's the, I don't know, I don't know, but I, I just raised your hearing, you see, and you have.
We were exactly, I should keep doing the dust numbers. Right, so.
It's the, on there, and I apologize. So, based, so there's no, you know.
Uh, we also started to temper the hallways, which we love. Dust from the outside sort of trapped. And that, so, um, I know I could still, it's really dry out some way. Well, it's just like, just like that. Like all clean ass wasn't all dust. Accidentally. Then, areas, most of them, lock through their house. Um, and when they put the paneling down over the, uh, concrete, that, they want them to, that, well, that, well, that's a material they use. Uh, um, probably, um, just not. Yeah, unfortunately, for instance, the concrete surface used to start powder up, so they have a lot of damage. We do all of it. So, on that side, um, A1, according to various, are operational there? That much is.
Uh, place to be complete?
Yeah, so, uh, another problem, I see, S, say, that's what we think. Very draining, a few of those.
Yeah, as far as like organizing some, please, anybody, maybe, maybe, training, all of us, all of us.
So, that's done, um, A1, forming ours, much less is getting very close, uh, to the, uh, act area. I wanna see, yeah, that's the second shift work, in a way, that, uh, hopefully, in the next month, might be an action. Basically, the larynx tower, um, the, the act area service area is under roof, so, CMU work going on there. The door in the workhouse now, will basically be simply, the combinations for larynx tower and water, so. So, in looking hard forward, there's some issues with that. First, back, basically, they're digging out, now, outside of that tunnel, putting water on it. So, this is two main activities happening, really, today. Uh, basically, it's very, and I can't, it's great, conscious here, um. That's the staffs, progress, both projects. Question on. My interest is further, handful of change work on the effective night. Uh, just highlight the, this change work, since the percentage, uh, in my pending, estimated values. Uh, only five eight percent, and hovering around, uh, one point five, one point six hundred per month. So, here's, first hand, with practical, what happens coming up, is same, city. So, that's all I had, so, it's, if I should, obviously, made a change over the wrong, and then, some, uh, designs.
A lot of the, Jason, we heard, I think, because there's so many people, I'm just gonna go in the water, but I can't, it's like, anything, you know, money. So, uh, first of all, any questions, uh, or questions? Uh, so, we have the, so, we got, well, we, um, yeah, I'm sorry. So, I just think this is the first time I see this document, and I know I've seen it last four weeks, I don't know if you guys are conscious, but is this, is that, I'm trying to. You have more than. Real success, if you have it.
Yeah, that one, yes.
Yeah.
About two weeks.
Right. So, what's this for me, that last thing?
Very good on the three, um, really a lot of these, um, unforeseen conditions this past summer. They had to re-vest the equipment, various water lines, actual gas. And so, um, really, really to your basement, yeah. So, you have to get these specs on based on your security, very, very fully conscious, yeah. Do you have any questions?
So can I hire an actor, maybe he's also a stunt girl, he's more?
Yeah, a lot of this work was not shown, we press on, on.
Why are you looking for?
Yeah, it was all response. Then, went on.
I have a, I'm mistaken.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Maybe there's some problem with that.
Yeah, that's better, sorry.
Architect, right?
Not necessarily, um, the first one, I did pad for I don't, I again, I scattered right as an air mission. Most of them, um, were in perceived book conditions, on stuff was, running that basin area, um, so it didn't be in areas of demolition, only when I saw it be removed, it had to be, had to be moved back up. So, I'm a contractor.
So is it a case that, and of course, I don't think this is one thing that I'm always with, for the line, so, is it a case that even though that, there lies down to me, there's always some of this issue, or is that, is that what you're saying?
I, I.
Right, like, so, so, how could I, I mean?
It's nice and sure, probably sure, it's not, not, not. Doesn't anyone not go back and try to?
Right, and still going forward though, if you still allow this, that, that's it now?
There might be, um, some risks, with all the tunnels, with twelve year old entrance, too. Um, really, getting through that part of its own force, basin service area, around past the pool, and pool filter room, around southwest, and, uh, west, uh. So that's the, this table three, and.
Just having, there's any way to, to get me in the future, you should take this.
They're ready.
You're like that.
Well, because our party's always in the danger.
Right, right.
Because we have the midlife, it's more than midlife.
Yeah.
So, it is a pain now.
Yeah, I know, because sometimes diligence, something, on their own. So, yeah.
Yeah, right.
So, I want to just. I think I may go back to the whole process, same with our parts, on schedule, or whatever, just something, we, grew it, flush it, what might happen, you know, so it's somewhere long, certain, all those issues now. There's a matter fund here, there's a merit fund in here, there's a value in here, and, uh, summarize it, for the, those issues. Uh, if you have, if you have a rock gas, uh, thousand dollars, this kind of stuff. So this was all the trouble work, and, yeah, everything, and after that whole line, where, building that four away from the pool, pool basement, that whole pool group, there was a, a tank of metal, and so these, in that area, that weren't called to be relocated, on, for instance, merit, coming out, so, and bros was having been on some, time, there, they, um, so you're able to make something, um, women and others, some of these would have to be re-located, um, so.
All right, any other questions? Well, one, one, actually, one question, Jason, that may not be related to this this moment, so, what's the headline, that has taken here that, that's associated to, maybe what's left, how, uh, you aware of, of that segment?
So I, I, well, I'm attached to the report, of one thing, so I would call this, the chart I did, um, it showed the budget, a hundred and five thousand, which I adjusted midline, these kind of issues, right now, a hundred and five thousand, uh, they, between, and there's a value in there, on here, so, I jumped it, like, right now, the big tunnel is next, rest area, currently a shoring, in that area, that's holding up facilities, they're gonna tear that whole off, they have metal behavior, but they're not, uh, so that's cost, of the line, so for, was it, uh, there's any, uh, uh, um, so really, once we get through the mid tunnel, uh, maybe some risk, if you tear down, nice tower, but that's not the same, it's, they just tear down, you know, getting close to these, so.
All right, if, uh, all of you said, uh, have a question, for, kind of, caution, uh, I can just, um, maybe, just, number three, as well, to, uh, this, this, uh,
Hey.
Um, there. Hi.
Oh.
Uh, many questions? All right, uh, this one, uh, she ordered a little bit of, uh,
Okay, so there's a very similar to the end, what we just talked about, just, really built, built mostly, uh, um, so various areas were built, like, going away, um, there was some double capacity, those areas, that had to be removed, that's what they had her, um, um, so that had to get removed, now, okay, we put a solid back, uh, we all look back, power go back, look at it, um, rise, somehow this works, happens double, where this is, uh, you have, there's, like, three main boxes, uh, so, this, you, so. So, I kind of threw it into that same, eighty-five thousand, well, some of this is actually, both the base, um, I go over it, whole, whole ceiling, and one, uh, when you really call it, the area is bigger, um, so, that's, I, uh, it's the same, uh, issue, drawings do not show, like, I, it's, we, it's always, uh,
So really, only, everything except for one disappearance? Except for number two?
Yeah, 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 number two, um.
Is that, is that?
That's something, yeah. It is, sort of combination of existing equipments, and, putting it in a different location, and I, I get, I watch, great space, with the walkway, um, and, maybe, and it's, like, those guys, on one place, it's, it's, uh,
Recent machine, where the, the, a lot of, that's. There was a discussion about, about, if you're asking, uh, us, us, there's an area of design, I think, once, the existing equipment was pulled out from the chair, or,
be stored, set in place, and, I think, the staff realized, like, it happened, it was two pieces of equipment, like, out, you know, one actually had to be, slightly, out, mercy rest, they have in there, to suit the size, of, of, so, and it could be, service, or, yeah, like, slash, you know,
He's still watching, too. Point two, Jason, Jason, we're gonna modify this topic, man, right?
Oh, you are.
All right, any other questions? All right, so, can I have a motion to, to, uh, I will change, or, or, three, as long as I'm by Jason, for a half, a forty thousand nine, seven.
So.
Sorry.
So, I can, okay, all the paper, one, five, uh, my, uh, my, uh, my attention, so, motion, all right, please, have a look, it's, it's, I go, and, uh,
Yeah, probably last. Three.
All right, all right, number, uh, four, like, ten, six, either six, or, uh, uh.
Okay, variety things on this, um, there were some markings, essentially, that were best, to use, so, they go down, uh, they have two, the front drive, side lighting, um, third, that was issued, so, there, that is the, gas, water line installation, that came with the main drive, uh, they, uh, threw, the piece of lights, that not show on any room, so they had no idea it was there, um, so they asked Eric to figure it out, and something, they, on, uh, function of, you know, condition, I don't know, that's, you know, uh, and, uh, and three, this example of what we're talking about, now, stairs, and whole fills room, and there's a variety of conduit circuits that ran from the area, that got demolished, or, I'm calling out, blue drawings, so, there, and I knew, that had to happen, so they did that, so, we got, full circulating pump, five more, like, black ones, and so, that's a good example of what happened after, uh, like, four, same kind of issue with over, in your basin service area, um, before, they basically, completely, now, the ground, service went to there, and all, uh, you read, hooked up, on a few drawings, um, so, they had, you know.
Any questions? Uh, a question, so, I'm, 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 uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, I guess, questions, there's two, uh, and, uh, I guess, whether, uh, it's, uh, the, uh, the, uh,
So, just, we're only, just, we got through, the, had three, four, I was real concerned about early on, um, Eric did a nice job of minimizing the costs, and, uh, taking initially, I was against it, twenty-five thousand dollars, so, uh, where, I think, process, that, uh, probably, probably, they have, usually, rid away, and work, and, uh, Well, I, there's, one, seven, uh, so, I have one, um, the existing tech equipment that's been used, uh, the board, and then, the lifts, all, the long equipment, gave, later, re-wired, go ahead, uh, something, if you decide, just do, the conversation, just, just, uh, have Eric do it, um, their electricians could, did, like, say, just, just have Eric, they, they, right, so, go ahead, and, uh, so, um, they did not own, that scope, uh, not, uh, face, this, uh, um, and, earlier, as I said, it was, uh, this, what they have, who, their association, just, uh, plus up, or, see, that's like, one, I have two, I can see this happening a lot, you can have inspection, on elevators, for all the something, over that, person wants, so, uh, but they have to be added, or, again, inspection, there, did, Eric, do it, uh, so, I have three, very similar to you, the rock drive lights, uh, to the back, side lights, in the, um, construction trailer area, um, they, they have, the huge pension tank, that had to be, that way, towards the old, such as, and, bar, and seat, uh, if there, the lights announced, yes, Eric, you need to replace, this, like, now, uh, I have four, uh, this is a, question, fire, load, sector, and, fire chief, just put a, or, go, and, on the other panel, at four, and I just, by the cafeteria there, that's the, you guys saw, uh, mercy, didn't go away, except the panel, I have, uh, twice, uh, about a line, part of Eric's skills, and five, was two, out of service, that's like, very, very, uh,
This is a job, which, um, the whole, the apartment, and, uh, so, didn't have that, uh, uh, they have it for, uh, as part of the project, or, are you saying that, they can, they can choose, which, uh, apartment, if you do, when it's expected, and, since, you know, I, you know, that, uh,
It's a, they, uh, so, they're, some of the minor nature, just, uh, I think, the flying base, and, the light fixture, and, a lot.
Yeah, like, they don't have to be, like, the minor, like, you can, just, you can, say, I was, like, the whole apartment, or, something, like, uh, Jason, they're done, okay?
And then you do about. So they go down. And. Designers. Design code. Or some. The weak side hall code. Uh shoot it out there.
Elevators, oh, it's every boat will go elevator. It's like every single one, I've never built a building without the elevator.
No, that's.
Right. Yeah, right.
Alright, fair enough. Um if you want a question, send uh.
Yeah.
See, we're just seeing.
Uh motion should run through uh Maryland, go. I see you go for seven because of that now. That's what I see.
Sorry.
On paper.
Uh.
Go five. Any questions? Alright, questions? If uh what would you have? She ordered book uh right now for nineteen thousand.
Okay, uh so a variety of items on here. Um handful of credits. Uh provided by. Free. Uh. You know. Realize all she's still a lot back. Um processing those credits. Uh so change before polishing. Also, that's where I'm back. Uh low condition. Item four. At um high condition area. Which now is used for service. Watch in this area. Wall between. Food court, that area does not really take. So um. A prudent that should be recycling and separate. 这就是在food court area. So the fall percent of debt. Still. Uh. And five was uh their mission was rival and build. Between the D and C curtain wall and. Walk, walk in there. And six. The full condition of uh. Noise mitigation of Fort Mars stands for. We had a three way on the new. Uh seven. Uh. Was a item. Uh. Nationally work. Uh. All. But they was in the area. Uh so in that service area outside the food court. There was still being. The way across. So where the tires and. Nice power. That mean this floor was next to power like four thousand feet and had. Block that we built in the school. Uh and eight. Uh it's temporary, we actually built. Um full leechers. Uh the auditorium and course area regrets. And um it's a threshold, just. Just here, I see. Of course, go in the DNC. Go for once. Uh. I have nine. Oh, they're actually workers walk. Change now, for the four, eat fours. Uh but due to the. Amount of work that occurred in August. That staff, recent staff. Eric started on good, so. What's the first thing you're getting? And I have ten. Uh. Handful of nationally item that that small thing does. Uh I have eleven. Uh many stairs um. Little redesigned the platform, it's not even stairs in the DNC. So the uh twelve. Uh ceiling that needs to get lower, this is the camp work. In there, so. This may hurt wall entrance. So it's lower, that's a good little pocket in front of that. Actually ceiling. And then the last one. Was maybe this on the sort of the floor to go in. Uh for show, then you all just.
Alright, so item six, uh the. So then. I need to be sure to notice, I mean, I would think. That something that would require. Situation would be really shameful.
That's it, actually, it's a vague industry. You acquire a contractor, it's a place. Most of the patient. In there. They test that concrete, don't do it. They don't, they don't have it, right? So. I did not have that in their staff. So. A lot of approaches makes. Anyway. We're not. This is approach.
Uh so no questions. And kind of a goal to uh. Motion to review. Uh which construction people. Wonderful, as this right now. Both sorry, so I can um motion to. Right on. Special change of well. As this has had, has a whole process by those.
Hey.
Okay, but.
Hi.
Well, hi.
Hello.
No, definitely. Um. Motion there. Alright, so now we're on to the sheet for uh nineteen thousand eighty.
Okay, that's a beauty, that's mostly their group. For noise, you know, it's all about size and that. Very small. Right, right. Um. Added handicap, I can go to the sidewalk, that's the best of those. That had been solved. Right, three. And then. Four. And five, all. Um over excavation. And um back though. Or super zero. Out on the site that will be below your driveway and. Those air stuffs. You know, correct the recording, okay? So all under supervision is around. And six. Was a allowed to relocate a new lost stand of the elevator shaft. Uh so we usually have some. Or the elevator contractor, it's sort of just. I actually think that. I have seven. Was a. Previously processed, ready to delete. Um. The lubeurs that were called out there. Now we had to add wire mesh in there. They certainly come from free airspace. The lubeurs that was back in uh free airspace, they had to have mesh. Great part of it. Uh so gained it too and yeah, we'll look at that happen there. That issue. Uh. You know.
So on behalf of speaking of questions, we did. Did the field time survey. You know, it was like. See, I can. I hope that um. That the uh construction. Uh. Had to come down with the radiation.
Yeah.
On the. Right, right. So that's thirty-six, seventy-nine again.
Yeah, I'm confident. It's not a call to have lube station. Um. The larger site there. Actually, it's not these. Uh. There's a unit price in contractor now, so it's having to stay in the line, some of this goes purely based on. Uh first, I was thinking of. So the unit price. Um they all contract out of it. Oh, yes.
Alright, um now a question to me by my motion here. Now, she's trying to change her, oh, that's. Had nineteen thousand.
Hello. Hey.
Um.
Uh.
Hi. So. Are you a special agent?
Okay. So thirteen.
Yes.
Uh those are neither danger air emissions, Fuji. Um. And four, one of the first ones, structural ceiling modified and ranked. Uh item two. Articulary ceiling. Need some redesign in air emission. I have three, uh similar structural steel. If they'll go through steel angle on the regular building. That ties to their wall. And this is their wall game on. Uh structural, architectural, it's like their account. And that angle is just. So. It's not just sort of referred to those. Right, four. Was the add this natural relays. Um. For ASI or Latin, which was their commission, the smoking evacuation. Access control or hardware. So under that's little review. For that ASI. Uh they analyze, they have this smoke cross relays. It's a go I. That's what happens. And five. On the southeast corner of the middle school. Um sidewalk grass around. Uh the foundation was disposed. The green. So I can have. Certainly, they want to talk about. Concrete term. Um so that's what that matters. And six was a small credit really for a change in the equipment. Give it a controller. So this easy add plus force. So I can create that change. So. Actually, it's somewhat operating responsibility. So it's a smaller.
So um sorry, you need to excuse me. Um I just wanted to do the anti-motive, he just said our. So why, why is. You saying him, why his air emissions so. Are what we might need for a bigger, I don't know, in our file, but it's.
Structural steel drives completely without air protection. So. Some angles that need to modify or. Or pass. Allow for. Some section of concrete.
So our file is wrong.
Your question information, so. Structural steel, I believe, these things got solid very sufficient.
Yes.
Um. Is our frame interior building. And these issues, so. Really, any questions issue of our files?
Right, we just want.
Very good.
And then behind, I, you say that was specifically had IPM? Um. She can scale the exposure, you can size something that. Does it spend?
That was. At that elevations. On the sidewalk, so the gray on that part. Um so you can see the uh blood from the vehicle on there. So they decided. By mine, they had to go back doing it, they had to grow. They're. So that's what's.
Then they would just. And any other questions? Comments? Wait, if not, can I question for you, just a special change for that. She says.
Yeah. Sorry.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
Who?
Um. Question. Alright, Jason, thank you, and um I know that was a wrong.
Yeah, it's a wrong.
But as I'm going through it, um I mean. We appreciate it, um hopefully, we'll be less deep forward in our credit if there are any.
Work, I take it for um. Um that's work is. Don't dig too much. Cause yeah. It gets out past. Actually, a lot of our. So yeah, I mean, I actually don't go at all. So now, some means of passing tunnel. This was a recent area. Um going forward, I'm not gonna call that, so I can say it's getting out of that. Uh. So if you recall, there is a new price of being concrete. At. So really, the great design was to take thick down rock. Drink, you know, clean, just a lot of. Foundation. That is a. Monster. They, the rock elevation, they're going, adding ups out of this. So just like that. Um. That is uh biggest. Was that, was this supposed to start going? This person is. So. So okay, what I talked about, so you say that sad part, but it's. Reveal of addition of the water. So I might have that for that, but they don't know. So this change order, send it, it'll go up because of that. See that increase. That probably. So.
Would that be really, would that be?
Right.
Would that be with a hundred and fifty-five thousand? Wrong, we're. Rather, it was the. Pops the.
And it's. Yes.
So this is the foundation, the new structure, it's not the tower. That's not that, not the tower. This is the tower.
He had a stress with the tower.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, I think that's a hard.
Yeah, he did in there. We stayed there, I stayed late that one day, it was really, that number.
Yeah, I think you talked about it a lot. Actually, that's. You have to make July. Start with the. Each door. Nine. Uh they may go down a little bit more. That probably. In that.
So this is something that happened, she makes. Specials one here.
So.
That's, that's what I'm saying, so like, well, you know. But I'm gonna do the kind of voice. Wrong, a lot of the elevation, and it's elevation. And two, what difference do you measure? Fisher. Mine. How was I getting on the ground? Oh, our change. Uh. Maybe there's.
Yeah.
And you know, that would. You actually. Hands for that.
You can't drill, you can't drill a hole like where you're at, drill a hole.
Yeah, if you go. Do this. This one chart, you know, it's a story. I've, I've read. This wheel divisions. That's been walked. And you got this with steel. They have that. And my one to do it, clearly, so with. And the. Work is. Um you can work the whole on better. Yeah. I'm not laughing. Project. Next month, that was four. Really. Really, by the end of the year, we have those cool pitches up. We go have a good handle on. Where this, you know, potential savings. More to the part of that, I think, nice. I don't know, yeah. Kind of cross, you like. It's not where you stay out, where you live, going home. Law.
Right, making us, Jason. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you.
Right, we also need to know two amendments that prior to meeting, as I said, we session could talk about. This round, it matters. Uh other comments? I'm.
Oh, God. You two have any comments?
Last to this, alright, um.
Lot of last, you lot lasted everyone out, Mike.
Oh, it must.
Sure.
It must take some.
Yeah, absolutely.
Definitely. Um it's just one last thing, we'll be terrible quick, and yet, um. So if you could, uh pass up like. Our budget, for budget, and I'm.
Yeah, you're gonna have.
Stay tomorrow night, I don't understand.
And then, I'll thank you for, um, sir. Sitting in and actually. Actually stuck with you.
It's all right.
For, so thank you for your. Alright, uh anything else? No, there's no, alright, and then.
Is that good?
Is that all?
Later.
Ah, that's. I thought an eye out.
Hold on, wait a minute. See you. Alright.
See you. Oh. I should make a leave here, I'm helping.
You're welcome.
So.
Sorry.
I just. Always. Every, every. This is solid, solid. Prostitute of office source.